See the pastors up there. Rusty, you getting close? He's finishing up a game. I'll call this meeting to order on Tuesday, January 20th, 2015. I want to welcome everyone. Tonight, somewhere out there, I hope, is Pastor Phil. This is a great Italian name that I can't... Manginali. Is he here? I didn't have to even pronounce it because he didn't, he's not here. So I will ask Corky Welch if he doesn't mind if you give our invocation and also lead us in the place of the flag. So if you, everyone, please rise.
Let us pray. Our kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this evening, Lord, and we thank you for this group of citizens that's come out to voice their opinions in the council meeting this evening. Lord, we know that this is a great country that we live in because we can do that. We just ask that you be with each one of the council members this evening, Lord, and help us to make the decisions that would further your word and be the best thing for this city. In your name we pray. Amen.
Under item two, agenda changes, I do want to announce that item 11A, which is the show cause hearing, that has been withdrawn. And also, we are going to table. There's three, four items on the agenda. Land use only is annexation, that we're going to table item A, B, and C until the 16th of February meeting. So I know there's probably a lot of people here for that. Trying to work out some things with the county and we have a great relationship with them. So we're going to table that until the 16th. Okay, under the mayor's report, we've got some folks here from Smyrna Elementary to present the character education presentation with the student lighthouse team. Is Brett Ward here? Is he here? Somebody from, that's okay. We got some kids coming. Grace Hinton, Yusef Henry, Marley Marlowe, Estheria Dominique, maybe? Jerica Arden, Oscar Castro, Lisa House, and Jose Isquere. So y'all want to tell us who's, who is doing this dog and pony show? Where is Mr. Ward at?
Lord is not available this evening, so...
Well, he's, this is a great school and he's a great principal.
Amazing place to work and we're thrilled to have a few of our students on the student lighthouse team here this evening to present our character ad, The Seven Habits. To present our character ad, The Seven Habits, at Smyrna Elementary School. So these leaders knew that they wanted to present to you. They took the time to write their own script and lines to very quickly give you a demonstration of what it's like to be a new student at our school, Smyrna Elementary.
And before we get started, if there's any parents that want to film something, you can come up here and film if you'd like to.
There's a lot of them.
Oh, y'all are filming? Yeah, but everybody's got their own, most, everybody's got their own cameras.
Thank you for having us.
We're glad y'all are here. Thank y'all so much.
Hi, my name is Liza House and I'm a student on the student lighthouse team. Thank you for letting us come and speak about the Leader in Me program tonight. Did you know that Smyrna Elementary is the first school in Smyrna to be a Leader in Me school? Our school's mission is to help every child become a leader. Tonight, we're going to be focusing on teaching you about the seven habits by performing a skit. The seven habits are what the students at Smyrna Elementary live by because of the Leader in Me program. I hope you enjoy.
Hi, I am Jose and I am a new student here at Smyrna Elementary School.
Welcome to Smyrna Elementary. My name is Oscar. Because you're new to our school, we want to teach you about the seven habits. The first one is being proactive. This means that you are, no. This means that you are in charge. Kids at our school are leaders when no one is watching. There was one time during math, I, when I went to get the trash that my peers dropped on the floor, I put the trash in the trash can. This was being proactive because nobody told me to do this. I hope you learn to be proactive at our school.
Thank you, Oscar, for sharing how to be proactive.
You're welcome, Jose.
Hi, my name is Marley. You just learned about being proactive. I want to teach you about habit number two, beginning with the end of mind. To me, this habit means to have a plan. I begin with the end of mind in my classroom every week when we use our leadership notebooks. For example, we graph how many sight words we know. This helps us come up with a plan to learn what words we need to learn next. You will learn this because you're so lucky to be in a Leader in Me school where we begin with the end of mind.
I can't wait to learn more about leadership notebooks.
Hey, Jose. Tell me, are you a procrastinator or are you a leader?
Unfortunately, I'm a procrastinator. I sometimes wait until the last minute.
Well, if you're going to be at our school, you can't wait till the last minute to do things. You need to put first things first. This means you do important things first, then the less important things afterwards. Last week, I wanted to read this really cool book, but I knew that I had to write a skit for lighthouse team.
Well, maybe being at this school will help me not be a procrastinator anymore.
Hi, my name is Grace. My name is Grace. Did you know that the habit number four teaches students to solve a problem where everyone is happy? So I win and you win. Do you want to hear a story where I saw win-win?
Sure, I would love to hear your story.
One time, me and my brother were arguing about a toy airplane. I really wanted to use it for my Barbies. He wanted to use it for his ninjas. We had to come up with a plan where we both won. So me and my brother decided to each get 10 minutes with the toy plane. I had this little timer to help me, thinking win-win helps me at school and at home.
I love the idea of winning, of win-win situations.
Hello, Jose. I, I hope you're having a good day. I want to tell about a time I was at home with my brother. We both wanted to talk about our days at school. I wanted to talk about, I started talking, then he started talking. And we both couldn't hear each other. Then I remember habit number five. Seek for a student to be understood. So I stopped talking and started listening. And he actually had a wonderful day. I am so glad I listened. It's always better to seek for some, understand them to be understood.
Wow, this is really going to, going to help me become a better listener.
Hi, my name is Estrella. Do you like working alone or with others?
Oh, I always like working with others.
Well, that's what we do at our school. We synergize. This is habit number six. I think that synergizing is great because you just don't work by yourself, you work with others. One time, we were doing problem solving in math. I was in a group. Together, we were all thinking and taking turns. So we were able to solve the problem correctly. Maybe one day soon, I can synergize with you and remember, working together is always better.
I can't wait to synergize with you.
Hi, welcome to our school. I want to teach you about the seventh habit, sharpening the saw. I think this is the most fun habit because you are using your mind, body, heart, and soul with the habit number seven. It's all about balance. This habit doesn't want you to use your brawling power all the time. It teaches us the importance of using your body, heart, and soul too. Like, when I go to the beach, I sharpen my saw. I use my mind by reading. I use my soul by relaxing. I use my body by swimming and I use my heart by spending time with my family. Remember, balance is key to a healthy life.
I am looking forward to learning about the habits.
Hello, my name is Jerica Rennett. I am in Ms. Johnson's fourth grade class. I am on the student lighthouse team. This team focuses the education of the school's seven habits. Honestly, I can't imagine the school without the seven habits. It's what makes our school unique and different than the others. You can carry the habits and use them for the rest of your life. Actually, I think the city will benefit from our students being such leaders. For example, our future citizens will follow the laws because we learn to be proactive, which means we do the right thing even when no one's watching. Also, the future citizens will know about habit seven, sharpening the saw. When they become stressed, they will know to stop and have a little me time. I hope you learned enough about the seven habits and what Leader in Me school looks like. You're welcome to come and visit anytime. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was excellent. Krista Bennett and Amber Hinning, they're the teachers. And this is all part of the Leader in Me through the seven habits of happy kids. And these are our future leaders and boy, that's really encouraging for... One of y'all will be up here one of these days if you, if you don't straighten up. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Thank y'all so much. It's, it's a joy to see these kids. It's amazing what they can do. Thank y'all so much. We've got great schools in Smyrna, got great teachers and staff and thank y'all so much. Any parents out there, y'all want to stand up to be recognized or friends or... Maybe they don't want to be recognized, that's okay. Thank y'all very much. It's great. Item four is a presentation of the 2014 audit. That's, we have someone here from our auditors. And she will give that report this time, but Toni Jo, you want to say something about it?
Yes, I just wanted to welcome Jenny Harris. She is here from Crayscavilson McGrath. And they are independent auditors and completed this audit for us, so she'll give an update.
Good evening.
Good evening. The audit, we issued an opinion on the financial statements and our opinion was an unmodified opinion. Our presentation is on the projector here. It was an unmodified or a clean opinion. The very first slide is of the general funds activities for the fiscal year. The general fund had revenues of 38.9 million and expenditures of 33.4 million and had a net change in fund balance of $3 million. The fund balance at the end of the fiscal year was $17.6 million. The largest category by far is the unassigned fund balance at $11.5 million. This unassigned fund balance would cover approximately four months of operating cost. GFOA recommends two months, no less than two months of operating cost of your unassigned fund balance. The next slide is the general fund's unassigned balance compared to the net change in fund balance for the last fiscal years. About the last three fiscal years. The net change in fund balance for the fiscal year 2014 was $3 million compared to the unassigned fund balance of $11.5 million. The next slide is of the city's water and sewer fund and it compares the last three operations, the last three years' operations. The fiscal year 2014 operating revenues were $18.3 million and the operating expenses were $13.8 million. The water sewer fund ended the fiscal year with a net position of $31.4 million. I would like to thank Toni Jo and her staff for their help during the audit. They're always so helpful and provide things as quick as possible. And I would like to answer any questions that council or mayor may have.
This is just on our website where people can, is on there yet where they can see it? Okay, and you'll be able to look at the audit and, I mean, it's good to have a good report. That's how we keep our AAA rating and it's independent auditor. So, and I'll let Ms. Taryn Nolowich, who chairs the finance administration, if she wants to say anything or anybody else wants to have a comment.
No, that's exactly right. This is an audit that we have done annually. It is done by an independent outside auditing firm. And reviewing the report and talking to Toni Jo, hearing the results. This was a fantastic report tonight and that is to the credit of the staff that we have here at the city. And I wanted to take a moment to thank them for everything that they do, as well as for all the other employees who work hard to make sure that they're, that all of the financial accounting and reporting that we have here is top notch. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? You got out easy tonight, didn't you?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Item five is land issues only is an annexation. As I mentioned at the very beginning, that these items will be tabled. I'll turn it over, well, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ron Fennell, who represents that district. If there's people here that are for that, it's, we're just, as I mentioned earlier, we got some things we're trying to work out. We have a great relationship with the county and this is not to put off, to just keep putting off so nobody, I don't know who's here in opposition, who's in favor of it. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Ron Fennell and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the outset, let me just say I'm going to move to table this to February 16th, 2015. But a little bit of background, this is an application that went to the county first. It has ultimately come to our attention. I know some people like to believe rumors. I want you to dispel rumors by just uttering facts. The city didn't come recruiting this piece of property. I think as a result of their conversation. I know I have a reputation and wanted to annex all the way over to Alabama and, you know, some of that's true. But in this case, it wasn't something that I initiated. But I would, I would be happy to have this property either in the city or the county to provide housing for folks in this particular area at this price point that people keep telling me they want to move to the Smyrna area to enjoy. So whatever the disposition ultimately of this particular tract of land, which is owned by Ward Seven resident, and this property is on the border of the county and the city at the Ward Seven Nexus, so that's how I am involved. I am thrilled to learn more about this as we go on. I know that the city staff spent a considerable amount of time once the application was disposed of in the county. And, you know, we're all still learning a little bit more about the details. But I think at last week's meeting with the developers, we learned three things. Number one, that they were meeting with neighboring residents to try to hear as many of the concerns and make some plan changes to incorporate a lot of those suggestions and have done so. Number two, that our staff, the professional staff, is cognizant of our strong relationship with the county on making sure that we have proper land use agreements between the city and the county and how we deal with issues of growth that we as a county have experienced over the last 20 years, much unlike almost 95% of the counties in America. So we're, we're very cognizant of that important relationship and the partnership we have with the county and we want to maintain that. And number three, that the specific recommendations that our staff made and the developer agreed with is more in keeping with the staff of the county on trying to adhere to a lot of the specificity around aspects of development criteria in Cobb County. And so we have yet to come to a conclusion about how this best works for everybody involved. I see Commissioner Oat here and I appreciate that. He is my commissioner and I am grateful that he's here to talk about it. But we will still need to have some more conversation about this. I shared upon entering the room how important it is for us to get this right. And I mentioned to the developer that we would defer this for a month to have more input. And I would like to personally have, even though it's not yet in the city, I'd like to have some input by Smyrna residents. I know many of the letters that I got in the last few days are by non-Smyrna residents. I didn't find a single resident in that letter writing campaign of Smyrna. But we're neighbors and we want to be good neighbors and I want to make sure that we all have the conversation together so that we come to the proper conclusion at the end of the day for this particular project. With that, Mr. Mayor, I move to table 2014-404 to a time certain, that is February 16th, 2015, on the zoning request Z14-028, rezoning from LI Cobb County to RMC 8, conditional, Smyrna. 5.161 acres and landlot 691 at 4719 and 4680 South Cobb Drive and 4696 Oakdale Road by Pulte Holmes Corporation.
Second, that's a motion to second the table. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Scott, we need to take the same action on B and C? Just on KB.
Mr. Mayor, I move to table ordinance 2015-0, annexation request, 100% of the owners requesting annexation. Ordinance 2015-01 for tract 1, 2.968 acres located at 4719 South Cobb Drive. Tract 2, 0.8, 0.0818 acres located at 4696 Oakdale Road. Tract 3, 1.735 acres located at 4680 South Cobb Drive. All tracks lying in Smyrna, Georgia, landlot 691, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County.
And a motion to table.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0, the table to February 16th. Item D, 2014-403, public hearings, zoning requests, Z14-2027. Approval for the use of a modular building as temporary office space for Arco Veterinary Care. 0.2 acres, landlot 245, 1010 Concord Road, the Blue Frog Construction LLC. Is the applicant here? Any chance? Okay. Would you please just get the background, Ms. Howard?
Yes, Arco Vet Care is requesting the special land use permit for the temporary use of a module office building that will allow them to remain in operation while the existing building at 1020 Concord Road is being completely renovated. Community Development does recommend approval.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request? Let the record show there is none. This is in Mr. Corky Welch's district.
Thank you, Your Honor. Could I get either Rusty or Ken, I don't know who's got the background on this, and give us a little bit of information about it?
Ms. Howard pretty much summed it up. Ms. Roxanne Pettit is requesting a special land use permit to allow the installation of a temporary office building at 1010 Concord Road, which is her personal residence. That office building is approximately 1,400 square feet in size. It's 24 by 60. She'll have her waiting area, her doctor's office, surgery area, lavatory, all within that modular building. She is also, she has already started the process of getting permitting for renovating her existing building at 1020, which is immediately to the east. Staff has reviewed this request. There's plenty of parking for construction and for her business. We recommend approval with three stipulations. One, that the modular building should only be allowed for a period of eight months after the issuance of the building permit. Two, the location of the modular building should be in substantial compliance with the site plan submitted with the special land use application. And number three, the exterior facade of the modular building shall be significantly similar to what was presented in the special land use application. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Rusty, you said eight months. What's the projected building time on this, on the modifications to the existing building?
In discussions with the, with the construction manager, they have said up to four months of construction time, so we built an additional four months into that time period for any delays or any issues that may come up. So they're not having to come in and resubmit right away if they run into a delay.
It's perfect timing with all the construction going out there anyway, so.
I have no other questions.
If the applicant's here, is there any questions to Rusty? If the applicant's here, if you could just come up and just tell us who you are and who you represent and what you're doing.
I'm Sean Rainey with Blue Frog Construction. Thank you for hearing us today. Basically, Mrs. Pettit, Dr. Pettit just would like to continue operating while we're tearing down her building and rebuilding it. And we're just putting that right in front of her house for her to do that. And we almost exclusively build vet offices. So we've gone ahead and procured the trailer. We've done everything inside it to set it up specifically for a vet. So she'll be able to go right in without having to do much, just set everything up and...
She's been there for a while, hasn't she?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
When she came there, yeah, so, good deal. We're glad you're staying.
Yeah, yeah.
Glad you got to work and support your kids and...
That's right.
On vacations and stuff. Any questions? Mr. Welch?
With that, first let me say I'm happy to see some of the businesses on the south side of Concord Road being redeveloped. I mean, we've, we've gone a long ways toward improving the road or maybe we've gone a long ways toward tearing it up and it's coming back together at this point. But I am happy to see that some people are going to invest some money in that south side and make it a better place and something to look better for the citizens. With that, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve zoning request Z14-027. Approval for the use of a modular building as temporary office space for Arco Veterinary Care on 0.28, landlot 425, 1010 Concord Road, Blue Frog Construction LLC with the provisions as dictated by community development.
I have a motion, a motion to second by Ms. Nolowich to approve this, who was it?
Mr. Fennell.
Mr. Fennell did? Okay. Okay, a motion to second to approve this zoning request. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion is approved 7-0. Okay, good deal. Y'all are doing good tonight. Item E on the land issues and zoning annexation portion is V14-039, a public hearing. Appeal the decision of the License and Variance Board to deny variance request. V14-039, allow pictorial images on the front of buildings and commercial wording and pictorial images on the side of the building at 0.65 acres, landlot 528, 3773 South Cobb Drive. Joanne Schwartz is the applicant. I'm going to get the background from Ms. Howard and we'll go from there.
Yes, the applicant has requested variances to maintain signage currently on the building for Smyrna Barkin Lounge. The applicant is requesting several variances to maintain signage that was added by the current owner in 2012 and the previous owner in 2006. The current signage on the subject property is non-conforming except for the wall sign mounted to the upper section of the South Cobb facing building elevation. And this was denied by the license and variance. and Variance Board.
The applicant is here. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this variance request? Let the record show there is none. This is in Mr. Welch's ward. This is the Corky Show, I guess, and tonight, so Mr. Welch, you.
I'd like to call Rusty again, or maybe Ken again. I don't know who's, which one's handling this. Do we need to have anybody sworn in, the, anyone's going to testify?
And Mr. Mayor, for the record, Rich Merritt, on behalf of the applicant and the person appealing the original denial, Joanne Schwartz, she is present here today, and I'm happy to speak on her behalf, and she's happy to offer any testimony if needed after we hear from the city.
Want to get sworn in out there? Wait, one time. I never have understood why attorneys aren't to be sworn in, but they don't, but.
Well, I mean, the theory of it is, is they're not offering testimony. They're just making arguments from the testimony that other people.
He has an answer for everything.
How about that?
Do we need to swear anybody in for them?
We do, yeah.
Just in case, yeah. Okay. You can come on up closer. If y'all have a seat, then either Corky or Rusty, I guess, goes first. Is that right? I mean, not Corky, Ken or Rusty.
What Ms. Howard said up front actually puts it in a nutshell. I mean, this was a request that was brought to the Community Development staff. We looked at it. We met with Ms. Schwartz. We talked about several different options. One of those options being that she could go through the variance process because what was existing on the building was not in compliance with the sign ordinance. It did go to license and variance. They heard it. They turned it down. There was some opposition to that request, and hence now it is in front of you guys, as our normal appeal process. What they are asking to retain is what staff has put in the report is pictorial images. There are, on one side, it's dog paws, a representation of dog paws. On the other side, it's a representation of dog bones. Plus, they have added a text as to the services that they provide at the business for that. There is an existing cabinet sign that is on the building that faces, and tell me, there is an existing cabinet sign that faces South Cobb that is in, that is in compliance, but the issue has to do with the walls and the painting of the paws and the bones with that. So, what you have in front of you is the appeal from License and Variance Board that they had denied that.
We have a rendering of those. We have, can the audience see what they're asking for?
I actually do have photographs. I'm happy to present them.
Okay. Any questions of Ken? Anybody? Okay.
I have none. I'd like to ask Ms. Schwartz a couple of questions, if I could, though. Just about the history of what's.
May approach him. Certainly should.
Sure.
For the record, photograph, which is labeled Exhibit 1, is the wall faces South Cobb.
Do we have that on?
The second. The first photograph labeled Exhibit 1 is the portion of her business, the exterior wall that faces South Cobb Drive. The second photograph, which is labeled Exhibit 2, is on the business wall facing the parking lot. And Exhibit 2 has been in existence in its current form with the signage and the pictures, or the words, I should say, since 2006?
That is since 2012.
I'm sorry, 2012, and Exhibit 1 is.
Since 2006.
2006, when she did not purchase the building until 2012.
Thank you. Clarify for me which were put on in 2006 and which were put on in 2012. It's the South Cobb Drive side that was put on in 2006, and then the parking lot side was put on in 2012.
That's correct.
Okay. And my understanding is you have purchased that building, and that's your, I mean, that's your business at this point. It's basically a daycare for animals.
It is.
I guess just dogs, maybe cats and other things, but just dogs. And just tell me your feelings on, you know, why you feel like we should grant you these variances.
The visibility on South Cobb Drive for that building is pretty nonexistent. You can't really notice the building until you're absolutely right on top of it. It's actually been in business as a doggy daycare since 2001, and I am getting new clients who said they had no idea it was a doggy daycare facility until they saw the dog paws on the side of the building. So, I feel it's very important for them to remain because of the low visibility traveling in either direction on South Cobb Drive.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have no other questions. Mr. Mayor, you want to make any statement that we've got for?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to, in brief sum, I know, "brief sum," as City Attorney knows, those are famous last words for any lawyer in any forum, but I will try to be brief. The fact of the matter is that back in November of 2014, she did present this zoning variance. I had not been involved at that point. She did so on her own, and it was denied 2 to 1, which is why the current appeal ensues. The pictures, as you can see, there's nothing by any means offensive, racy, ambiguous, or obnoxious about what she is seeking to retain. It's important for her business. It's a doggy daycare. That particular strip mall, which is located across from Wade Ford and South Cobb Drive, could certainly benefit from the continued presence of her business in its current state. She is a successful business owner. She is, this is her second facility, actually. She has another one in East Atlanta. She's been doing this for a while. She's a proven businesswoman in this area and would like certainly to remain as such in the Smyrna community for a long time to come. Just to be clear for the council, she was actually given a warning letter dated back on, and I don't have extra copies, I apologize, but it was dated March 31 of 2014. She was given two weeks to make whatever changes to come into compliance. She was never actually cited, and she felt it was in her best interest at the time to just appeal, or I'm sorry, to submit zoning variance and to pursue it that way. But she's not actually ever been formally cited. And I don't want to be overly technical with it. I'll just point out that when you look at Section 82-15, the sign requirements, it's a little bit unclear, to me anyway, what exactly she's not in compliance with, because one of the signs, and clearly what she has here fits the definition of sign on the second page of the letter, which is in 82-2, that particular code section. But the portion of the wall facing South Cobb Drive, it's unclear because she wasn't formally cited if it was, the letters or the images were too big, they were too small, if there was something else wrong with them. And it's, and I'm a little bit unclear as to why she would have been violation of what was facing the parking lot, because that didn't seem to really apply when you look at the code section cited. The point is this. It's good for business for her to be there. It's a doggy daycare. Having dog bones, paw prints, is clearly indicative of an animal-related business. Vet clinics have them. Other doggy daycares have them. I've seen them all over this state. Just asked for this accommodation. She certainly would not change any of the existing images or signage if the council permitted her to have this variant. She'd be more than willing to agree that there will be no more changes. She just wants to keep it as is. There would be an expense to her doing that. I don't know what the estimate would be, but it would probably be a couple thousand dollars to pay in all that and cover it up. And I want to point out, unless somebody's walked in, I haven't heard any opposition to this appeal here today. And I'm happy to answer any questions if the council asks me.
Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you for your time.
Hearing no questions. Your Honor, I would make a motion to overturn the decision of license and various and make a motion to approve V14-039, the allowance of pictorial images on the front of the building and commercial wording, pictorial images on the side of the building, 0.65 acres, landlot 528, 3773, South Cobb Drive, owned by Joan Schwartz, with a provision that no additional signage be added to that building. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. I need two more people to vote. One, that's approved, four, no. That's voted down. That's four nay and three yay. Am I reading this right?
Mm-hmm.
Or the motion fails, then? Is that correct? So, do we need a motion? Do we need a motion to deny? Nay for Ms. Pritchett, Ms. Bluestein, Ms. Wilkinson, and Mr. Lenica. So, I'm going to need a motion to deny. Have a motion. I need, yeah, I need a second, if anybody's.
Second.
Oh, Mr. Lenica, second.
Ms. Wilkinson, seconded.
Okay, whoever. Ms. Wilkinson's seconding, okay. Is there any other discussion about this? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Need one more vote. It's four to three. It's denied, four to three. I mean, I feel that this is, we must have discussed this upstairs for I don't know how long. I don't, in my personal opinion, I don't find it to be offensive, the sign at all. There's some, I think, some questions about how long it's been there and, anyways, it stands right now. It's been denied, four to three, so we'll see. We'll go from there. Okay. Next item on the agenda is previous licenses. We have none. Seven is formal business. A 2015-16, approval, award six, reappointment of Neil Robinson to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board, KSB, for a two-year term to expire, December 31, 2016. Mr. Wade Lenica.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Robinson has served on the KSB board for many years, represented Smyrna and Ward Six well. A resident of Forest Hills, she's interested in serving another term, so at this time, I move to reappoint Neil Robinson to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board for a period of two years, ending December 31, 2016.
Motion to second. That's a reappoint Neil Robinson. In discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, 7-0. Item 8 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item 9 is consent agenda. Do we, Ms. Howard, would you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Yes, item 2015-21 is approval of the January 5, 2015, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item 2015-18 is approval to accept a grant from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation, which has been awarded the Smyrna Police Department, valued at up to $24,979.55 for an Avatar III Tactical Series robot. And item 2014-410, approval to use council chambers on Wednesday, January 21, 2015, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. for the Heritage at Findings annual HOA meeting.
Move approval.
Motion to approve, and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote.
And I'd like to request that when the robot arrives, it pays us a visit here in council chambers.
It's approved, 7-0. Item 11, as I mentioned earlier, showcase hearing has been removed from the agenda, withdrawn. Citizens input, we will start tonight with Mr. Ron Fennel.
Debate report.
I'm sorry. Well, you know what? I don't have.
They just started saying.
You know, mine doesn't say that. Oh, wait a minute. It does. It's my bad. My bad. Been a long night. So, we'll start tonight with committee reports. Start with Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you. Chief Akers, if you'd come forward. As all of you know, we've had a very interesting winter season so far, but I think in the near future, that's coming to an abrupt end, and the chief has some tips for us to help get through that.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. You know, I'm sure, like, B, you've all enjoyed the last four or five days of what seems to be early spring-like weather. I think probably, unfortunately, old man winter's not quite done with us just yet. There is a very slight possibility of some winter mix over the weekend into Monday. Probability's kind of low right now for that really to accumulate or amount to anything, but I think that it's the perfect opportunity for us to all contemplate and take advantage of this and ask ourselves, are we really prepared or are we prepared as we could be in the event of being at home for two or three days like we have been in the last couple of years? And, you know, it can be simple things, like making sure that we have flashlights with fresh batteries and flashlights instead of candles. You know, being the fire chief is kind of an important thing. Simple things like just a few extra blankets, some extra food to make sure that we don't have to get in our cars and get out on the roads when there's ice or winter mix on the roads. For information like this and much, much more, I'd encourage everybody to visit our website for the Emergency Management Agency, readysmyrna.com. And that's all I had.
Good deal. Thank you, Chief.
Chief David Lee, Smyrna Police Department, has some new information. He's in civilian uniform today, so hopefully that's good news.
Yes, sir. I have a resolution for 2015, no more surgeries. And I'll stay off the roller skates, too. Things are going pretty good. As you see, we're able to get a grant for a robot that will be the only department in Cobb County that has one of those style robots. And one of the more significant things about is that it's able to climb stairs. But, so, we're real excited, and it's going to be a really good thing. We've been very fortunate, because, you know, we recently got a side-by-side donated to us, and we've been, of course, it was bright yellow, so we've had to get it painted black, and we're in the process of making it look like a police vehicle, if you will. So, I, we, you know, we used one of those last year during our little snowstorm, so it was nice to have a little vehicle like that where we were able to get around. We, I kicked off my leadership training for my sergeants and lieutenants. Last year, you know, I did approximately, we did it for about 11 months, and it was great to hear these elementary school students teaching out of the same book I did, Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. This year, we're using a John Maxwell book, Developing the Leader Within, and I've opened it up to other departments in this city. And so, we've got approximately six people from other departments in the city, and I'm probably going to have one person from Cobb County be involved with it as well. So, we're real excited. We're moving along. We do have some openings. We're working towards filling those. Interviewed two applicants this morning that really impressed by them. So, and most of the ones we've seen have been pretty impressive, so we're real excited about that. Preliminary status, if you will, on our crime stats for 2013 to 2014, we're looking at between a 10% to 12% reduction from crime from last year. Now, we got to wait basically until the first week of February. Now, we gotta wait basically until the first week of February before we have hard number on that, but looking real good, that's a pretty significant reduction in crime. Our major problem that we're still seeing is theft from autos. So one thing I say to everybody, lock your vehicles, don't leave anything out in plain sight. If you have to leave it in your vehicle, if you can put it in your trunk, please do that. Questions?
Yeah. If you're, now that you got your robot, what about a drone?
Well, actually, we are looking at one of those.
That would be great.
We've, Captain Leonard, who, he's heading up our Hoffs' negotiation, and primarily, that's what we'd be using it for, for situations like that, because you have to be careful not to, you know, get into somebody else's privacy. It's, you know, it's, you don't want to be too big brother with things, but, you know, it is a good tool, and what we're looking at is if the price is what he was telling me, it's less than a $2,000 purchase. So we're not getting one that has heat-seeking missiles or shotguns or anything like that.
I just think it would add a different component to, you know, the department.
There's no question, and I ended, all kidding aside, helping out on crime scenes as well. You know, when you can get a good aerial picture, you know, of a scene, you know, there's no question, that's, it'll be, it'll be a very good asset.
Oh, okay, good.
Good.
Chief, thank you for the great work with the team to get our crime stats down, and I know it's an ongoing effort to stay focused on that, and I'd just like to join the rest of Smyrna and say into all of you in the public safety field, thank you for what you do every day, 24/7, 365, to stand there and protect our businesses, our homes, and our families, and we hope it's the safest year yet for the Smyrna Police and Fire Department.
Me, too, and I accept that on behalf of the men and women of the Smyrna Police Department, they're the ones that get the job done.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, I conclude my report.
Mr. Wade Lenica.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to invite Kay Bullock, our HR Director, to come forward and give us a brief HR report. While she's coming, I will note that Terry Graham, our city clerk, has no report for court services.
Mine's brief, but it's my honor and pleasure to recognize two people tonight for significant years of service with the city. The first one, with 15 years, goes to our wonderful attorney, Scott Cochran. He didn't even realize it had 15.
Three.
Time does fly. And it is my true honor and pleasure to recognize with 35 years of service with the city, our Honorable Mayor, Max Bacon.
I didn't know that was going to happen. Three? I didn't think you were that old. I told somebody yesterday, I thought you were in your early 30s.
And that's my report.
Terry said she was three when I was elected.
That's pretty nice, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bullock, for that report. January is always a busy month, seems like everybody gets rested up over the holidays and then gets back to work in activities with renewed energy and vigor, and this January has been no exception. Just been a lot going on in the city of Smyrna, it's been a busy month so far, and will continue to be a busy month. On January 8, I had the pleasure of representing the city at the Georgia Army National Guard Change of Command Ceremony up at Dobbin's Air Reserve Base. Wished Major General Jim Butterworth good wishes as he heads to go to head up the Georgia Emergency Management Agency, and General Joe Gerard as he takes over responsibilities, Adjutant General for the Georgia Guard. It's important to have the guard close by Smyrna, many guard members live in Smyrna, certainly as a veteran, I appreciate, you know, what they do and how often they have to deploy into combat to protect our nation. We all owe them a great debt of thanks. That followed up on January 10, Saturday, with the rally at Emory Adventist Hospital by veterans and friends of veterans, seeking to bring to the VA's attention, the Veterans Administration's attention. That site is a possible VA medical clinic, which will be coming to Cobb in the future. We don't have an exact date, could be two years, could be seven years, it's anybody's guess, but we're at least trying to put them on, put that site on the radar screen so that folks in Washington and locally can take note that that site is a great site and has a lot of support in the veterans community to be a site. On January 15, I met with the Advanings Glen Homeowner Association Board, updated them on things going on in the city. They're generally very pleased with how things are running. January 20, today, was a unique opportunity, we had a delegation of almost 20 government officials from the Philippine Islands, their federal government, here to tour Smyrna, part of a program run at Georgia State. The officials came, heard presentations by our staff, who did very, very well, and then we toured them around the Village Green, the Community Center, the library, the Veterans' Memorial, the Market Village. They were very, very impressed, very happy to be here. I told the council, one of the things that I thought was interesting was every time we'd go somewhere in Smyrna, a bunch of them would all stop and take pictures of each other in front of buildings or in front of signs, you know, Smyrna. And, you know, it's nice, it's fun to show off your hometown and have other governments actually care enough to come to Smyrna. I mean, you've got to think about this, there's probably 80-something municipalities in the metro Atlanta area, you know, you've got 10 counties in the region, more depending on how big you draw that circle, and out of all of those, they choose to come here. I mean, what an honor that is for Smyrna and our community to be highlighted in that way, and I was proud to be a part of that, a very small part. Tomorrow night is what's mentioned on the consent agenda, I'm hosting the Heritage Advanings Homeowner Association here at City Hall for their annual meeting, do that every year for them, looking forward to being with those folks and seeing them. On January 22, and this is a public meeting up in Marietta, the Dobbin's Air Reserve Base Joint Land Use Study will be presented again in a public hearing, a public meeting for information. Citizens are encouraged to attend, I think that starts at 6 o'clock, and I think it's in the library, Central Library in Marietta. Citizens are certainly welcome to go, but they're trying to make sure that they assess the impacts of that base on the community, and if there are any impacts, how do we mitigate them and protect that base, which is the ultimate goal, from any future base closures that may come, which would be a huge impact to this community if that base were to close. On January 24, there will be a, it's called a Veterans Town Hall Meeting at the VA Medical Center, the hospital indicator. It runs from 9:00 to 11:30 a.m. in the Pete Wheeler Auditorium. It's, be presentations and questions and answer. The notice that I received said seating is limited to the first 100 veterans, and so it's important, if you're a veteran, that you RSVP, that you intend to go to that event so that they will have a place for you. And I'm going to tell you how to contact them to do that. You can call Elizabeth Cox, C-O-X, at 404-321-6111, extension 6243. Again, that's 404-321-6111, extension 6243. Or you can email her at Elizabeth dot Cox, again, Elizabeth dot C-O-X, the number 2, at VA.gov. Elizabeth dot Cox, the number 2, at VA.gov. And lunch is provided following the Q and A session, so that's a good opportunity for veterans with questions or issues to go straight to the horse's mouth, so to speak, meet and talk with the VA, get your questions answered, and certainly want Smyrna residents who are veterans to be aware of that opportunity. And finally, coming up on January 25, I'll be meeting with the Devonshire Court Homeowner Association for their annual meeting, and I'm very much looking forward to that meeting. It'll get busier, again, later in the month than through February, but for now, Your Honor, that's my report. Thank you.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to ask that Mary Moore from the Smyrna Library come give us a report.
Hi, good evening, thanks. Smyrna Library is now providing Next Reads newsletters, this is a new service for our book lovers. These newsletters are brief monthly emails that highlight new books in a specific category, that way you can always stay on top of all the hot titles. There are 25 different categories to choose from, and these range from anywhere from picture books to mystery, DIY, just about any topic you can think of. So all you have to do to sign up is go to smyrnallibrary.com and follow the link to sign up, just enter your email and then check off all the boxes that you're interested in, you can sign up for one, two, three, or all 25 newsletters. In February, Smyrna Library will celebrate African-American History Month, we will host a traveling exhibit about the Tuskegee Airmen, and that exhibit will be on the first floor in the reading room, and we'll also have books and materials about African-American achievement that you can check out, too. On Sunday, February 1, the Friends of Smyrna Library will host a program about local folk artist Nellie Mae Rowe. Although she's very well-known locally, she's actually internationally known, she, her works are available for viewing at the High Museum, the Smithsonian, around the world. The Friends' first Sunday lecture will feature a couple of short films and a discussion about Ms. Rowe. This lecture is February 1 at 3:00 p.m. in the Smyrna Library Meeting Room. Thank you very much.
That was actually, she lived down on Pacers Ferry Road, and used to go by there all the time, she had something outside her house, there was a change every time you went by there. That was back before they have, before they tore it down and built the big high rises down there.
Yes, we're hoping some of the people that attend will have firsthand memories that they can share of Ms. Rowe.
That's right, right, good, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I would like to ask Steve Ciaccio from the Parks Department to give us his report.
Evening. I wanted to mention a couple of things about registration for Smyrna Little League as well as Smyrna Soccer, because it is almost spring, it's 63 degrees, we should be thinking about baseball and soccer. SmyrnaLittleLeague.com, registration opens until February, it is open now until February 8. Tryouts are on February 8. That program is for kids age four through 13. On February 8 is their tryout date, contact information is on their homepage. Ages and divisions will be posted on the site tomorrow. Games and practices are played at Brinkley Park and Camp Park, that's SmyrnaLittleLeague.com for more information. Smyrna Soccer Club, online registration is now open for spring youth, registration will be open until February 15, after that, a $20 late registration fee will be applied. That program is for kids four through 19 years old. Practices begin the week of February 23. Registration fees are on the league's homepage, that is smyrnasoccerclub.com. Games and practices for the Smyrna Soccer Program are at Johnquill Park, Riveline Park, and Taliesin Parks, so be thinking spring, be thinking soccer and baseball for your children. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and with that, I yield.
Ms. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to call on Ann Kirk with Keep Smart and Beautiful.
Thank you and good evening. We had our second annual Martin Luther King Day of Service yesterday for the city, and we had approximately 50 volunteers. We worked at Norton Park Elementary, painting restrooms, and we also worked at Belmont Hills Elementary refurbishing a handicap ramp to the lower playground. So we, they made a huge difference, we have, we had two teams from IBM and a large team from Georgia Power, so we were very, very happy to have those volunteers, plus a few from the community. We also worked at the community garden and refilled 16 plots. So it was a good day, was a great weather and very enjoyable. Good news, based on the number of calls that I'm getting about shredding events, we were able to get another shredding, free shredding event scheduled for March 28, from 9:00 a.m. until noon at the Eileen Wolf Center on Church Street, and thanks to Iron Mountain, and we need the tons of paper, so save your paper and bring it out to be shredded on March 28. Our next adopt-a-mile will be January 24, that's this Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. until noon. We ask that you please wait until the temperature is at least 35 degrees before you come out to do your mile, and in the event of inclement weather, we will postpone the event till February 7. On February 21, we'll be having our second Arbor Day Festival with the Tree Board. We will have an event for adults in the morning, and we'll also have a children's component that will be hosted by the Tree Board, and in the afternoon, the library will be showing the Lomax. So that should be a lot of fun for everyone and a lot of good information about trees. We'll have the Urban Forester, Joe Burgess, there to talk to everyone about tree selection and care, and also to answer questions. So it should be a really informative day for everyone. We're expecting our bailer to come on March 9 to the new recycling center, that was a little bit later than we had anticipated, but hopefully we'll have that center up and running by mid-March. And we will probably move our corp, our department offices over there before the center is actually open as a recycling center. Any questions?
Been busy, thank you, Ann.
Thank you very much.
Public Works has no report this evening, but I do want to make a couple of comments about Concord Road. I've received some emails recently regarding some issues that we've had during the construction process, some merited, some not quite as, not quite as much merit behind them, but I want to make a comment that any time I've received a comment, I made contact with Scott Stokes, either Scott or our city engineer or Crowley Engineering, that they have been out there very quickly to take care of the problem. We added multiple reflectors throughout the course of that project, which have made a lot of difference during the rain and during the nighttime, and I think at this point, we're all seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, it's very faint right now, but we're looking at somewhere around April to see that project finished, and I'll be as happy as anyone else out there to see it complete. So with that, Mr. Mayor, are you?
Ms. Sharon Malowicz.
Thank you, it's going to be quick for me tonight, Community Relations does not have a report, and we've heard what we're going to hear from Finance tonight with the audit that was explained in detail earlier in this meeting. It's pretty quiet, I agree with the fire chief, we are in what I like to call fake spring, don't let it misguide you and lead you down paths of short slaves, because it's not going to stay, but I think we're going to be ready when winter does come back. With that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
I don't want winter to come back, I like fake spring. And now I'd like to invite Mr. Sudrith up.
I'd just like to wrap up 2014's numbers by telling you, when I checked on them today, that we actually were 24% for the year, meaning January to December, above 2013. So as I had been discussing with you throughout the whole year, we are well ahead of where we were before, so business is still good in Smyrna.
Mr. Sudrith, when you say we're up 24%, just to clarify for citizens, are we talking about the number of permits or the dollar value of permits, or?
Yeah, we're talking about the number of permits, we're talking about- Yeah, we're talking about the number of permits. We're talking about the value of the permits, the cost of the construction itself, the numbers of planned reviews. There are, there are about 10 items that we track that go into that. And when you average them all out, we're about 24% above where we were, taking that same technique back to 2013. That's what we mean by that.
After five years of the Great Recession, it's nice to hear those numbers.
Yes.
Thank you.
And with that, I yield, Your Honor.
Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, was privileged this afternoon to meet with the people from the Philippines. Super nice people. We were in this council chambers. And the staff did an outstanding job, and I do want to recognize them by name. We had Tony Joe, we had Ken, Jennifer, Jared, Chief Mike Brown, Chief Roy Akri, and Chelsea, who put this whole thing together. So I want to thank all of you guys. I know you worked very hard. That presentation was just excellent. The people had lots and lots of questions. At first, they were kind of shy about asking. And then as the questions, as the questions were being answered, more and more people started asking the questions. So they were very interested in the presentation that was made, the finances, understanding what the SPOLOST really was, talking about taxes. So it was very interesting, and I certainly enjoyed it. And I want to thank all you guys because you put a lot into it and made a very good impression. One other thing, I was at a ribbon cutting on Thursday. We have a new business downtown Smyrna. It's called the Super Green Solutions. And they have all kinds of neat things for energy savings and just, I mean, it was amazing. I'd never seen some of the things that they came out with. They're an Australian company. And so if you get a chance, stop by and visit them. They're in Suite 106 over in the back building where the, our new academy is. So that was, that was really nice. Got to meet the owners, got to meet some of the people from other countries that were there. I think they're getting ready to gear up for the United States. So they've got a lot of energy-saving ideas and a lot of things that can save you money. So with that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Howard, anything else? Mr. Cox?
Ms. Graham, anything else?
I do want to recognize our Commissioner, Bob Ott, who's came in. You'd probably like your whip, you and Mike Terry, that like are both tired. I don't know if you want to say anything or just...
No, we'd just like to say it's always a pleasure when I can make one of your meetings, since we have such a great relationship between the county and the city. As you all know, the county kind of went through a little bout of vote, let's change your mind, revote, over some HUD monies. And what I'd like to announce tonight, is what I announced at the last commission meeting, is that I'm hosting a series of seven town hall meetings throughout the county with the purpose for all nonprofits that want to apply or find out how the CDBG and the HUD funds are distributed, the town halls will be for them to kind of learn how the process. The application deadline's in April, so those town halls will be January and February. And you go to my website or the county's website. Those dates are listed.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you so much. Last thing is citizens' input. We have one person that signed up for that. Ali Bakri, 3459 Shawnee Trail. Comments?
My first comment tonight is I understand the city's looking at possibly putting in lights over at Lake Park. Obviously, you have some money to do that. We'll have a sprinkler system in there that, to me and many other people, feel it's a waste, over $1,000. And yet, we can't afford a $500 space heater for the restrooms to stay open. Now, you had three warm days in a row and people go over for a picnic. It's easy, it looks like it's very well insulated, but to close the park's restrooms when they have especially kids, they have to go maybe to find a public place like Kroger. It's, I feel embarrassing to the city that they could afford a space heater and keep those restrooms open. As a result, with no water running, people are now bringing bottles of water and milk cartons full of water for their dogs at the park. And yet, I've suggested they put a couple recycle bins next to the fence there where they can throw the ex, empty bottles and stuff in. And that hasn't been done. Every little bit helps when you're recycling. But again, getting back to closing these restrooms, it's very embarrassing for people to have to pack up everything to leave the park and go find a place to go. And I hope this council will consider finding a $500 or so to put a space heater in there. It's, a lot of people have complained on that. And secondly, when you call City Hall and ask for a councilperson, the proper recording would be, this is Councilman such and such in such and such ward. I'm not in at the moment. Please leave a message and I'll get back to you. There are a couple council people that have it on the recorder. They mention the company that they work full-time for. And I find, and other people find that improper, to have, when you have a full-time job, that shouldn't be on a Smyrna telephone. And it, it should be corrected. And thirdly, I'm proud that people are starting to announce they're running like in Ward 3, the interest in running this fall. And I hope the enthusiasm to take an interest in running and being a part of this council is good for competition. And I hope other people in the near future start announcing it. We've got to get more than 15% up on an average turnout in the elections. Thank you.
If there's no other business to be bought for this body, I'd consider this meeting adjourned at, it's like about, is it 8:46? I click my clock, 8:45.